I'd like to bring the October 8th, 2014 Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. Would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Posnell.
Here.
Commissioner Selberg. Commissioner Buck.
Here.
Commissioner Azami.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Coletta.
Here.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Gabrielson.
Present.
Commissioner Gordon. And Chairman Fouchet.
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
At our last commission meeting, we greatly missed John Montgomery. Unfortunately, after that meeting, John passed away. John Montgomery has been a longtime planner for the county and always sat right up there and is always a joy just to hear him present his case. John was such a commanding presence during the meetings, it was difficult to imagine proceeding without him. His wit, knowledge, and solid grasp of the guides, the facts guided his commission through the controversies. John will be sorely missed by the commission. We wish his family well and our prayers are with them. Please join me in a moment of silence for John Montgomery. His picture is up on the screen. Thank you. Thank you. Additional announcements. Anyone who has not yet signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete the Request to Speak form, which is also located in the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A Request to Speak form must be completed for each item you'd like to speak, including sub-items. Please note that there are stairs on the right, left, center aisle, and we ask that you use caution when using these stairs. There's also a ramp located at the audience's left. If anyone has any written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to use or present today, please have seventeen copies and give them to the staff member in the back of the auditorium. She's back there with her hand up. Thank you. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the table with the overhead camera next to the podium to present your documents. If you want your documents to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item clearly marked on the document. Members of the public cannot speak to the staff members that are sitting in the table with microphones during the meeting. If you have any questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium, and she will meet you in the lobby. A timer will be activated, and all speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentations and statements. Everyone, please turn off your cell phones or pagers or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must receive a phone call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience refrain from talking with anyone during the presentations and discussion. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The items with the recommendation made by the commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, November 3rd, 2014, at 9:30 a.m. in the same location, with the exception of any items that are continued. Everyone attending the meeting is reminded that the administrative bill in campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed curb-to-curb. Also, only bottled water is allowed in the auditorium, no food, soda, coffee, et cetera, is allowed in the auditorium. If there are any items remaining, the commission will break for lunch at 1:00 p.m. Approval of last month's minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review? Any changes, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to also express my condolences to Mr. John Montgomery's, you know, wife and family members. I had the privilege, and also some of the commission members, to work with him in the recent months on zoning ordinance, and the commission members on the committee request this commission and also Board of Supervisors and Director Hunt to dedicate the review to John Montgomery, and we hope that, you know, the board and also this commission accept that, and we would like to even ask the Director Hunt to have his name there and the dedication would be printed, because he was a viable part of that and his comments, writings are all over that zoning ordinance.
I'll second that. I would agree with that. Mr. Hunt, are you okay with all that?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's very appropriate, and I want to thank Mr. Azami for making that motion and staff fully supports it and will also agendize this item for the Board of Supervisors at the time of adoption of the revised zoning ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number one.
Mr. Chairman, did we need to vote on that? You had a motion and a second.
Actually, I don't think we really need to vote, do we? Or do you? Okay, all right. We have a mo— can I— I'll entertain a motion.
I made a motion to dedicate the zoning ordinance review to John Montgomery.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to dedicate the new ordinance to John Montgomery. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Item number one.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for an extension of time for a rezone of Assessor's parcel numbers 221, 35021, and 022 to establish an energy overlay, solar photovoltaic zone, on a property zoned RE10A residential 10 acre, recreation 10 acre minimum lot size in the Mojave Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval for this request for an extension of time, subject to conditions.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is not present. We have no speakers on the item. I'll entertain a mo— any questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I ask the staff, what is the basis of your approval, I mean, recommendation for approval? Because I read the Board of Supervisors review, and they said that, you know, one of the items that we have is that it shouldn't be—it should be compatible and not creating a problem to the neighboring, and we have residential properties all around it, and I know that there is a Sun Valley Airport, and there were supposed to be—the applicant was supposed to work with the Sun Valley Airport. I talked to some of the members of Sun Valley Airport. They have never been notified. I know that this commission, back in 2011, unanimously wanted to deny the, you know, recommendation to the board, but I know it was, at that time, that board, you know, overruled our, you know, recommendations. So I just need to know if there is any new findings in this particular thing. There is—I visited the site, there is no infrastructure available, even if, you know, happens in terms of uploading, there is no grid available or anything like that. So could you let us know what's going on?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Azami, members of the commission. As far as, you know, recommending denial for the request for an extension, on the basis of incompatibility, you know, the board did approve this in 2011, and on the site and surrounding the site, there's been no substantial change since that time. Extensions of time are usually based on progress. This applicant, they have told us they've coordinated with Mojave Sun Valley Airport, so I would have to get back to them to find out who they've been talking to and what efforts of coordination that they have had. They have been discussing with us the requirements for a site plan, so we are seeing progress along that front.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As we all know, and some of us that have the experience on these solar farms and solar ones, it is a very complicated, it's a very sophisticated, and a very time-consuming. There are a lot of elements in place to proceed with this kind of a project, and one of the main factors that they need is to secure water, and as you see in your package, MVAD already said that, you know, they don't have even the water for it, that they don't have any infrastructure. I don't believe that there was any forward progress on this project, so I think that, you know, I think that, you know, we should just, you know, do the same thing we did three years ago and deny that, because just to change the zoning without any merit is not right.
I'll second that.
Is that your motion, Mr. Azami?
Yes. I make a motion to deny.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to deny item number one. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two.
Item number two is an evaluation for a request for a rezone of Assessor parcel number 12005055 from a CM Commercial Manufacturing Zone to a CMO, Commercial Manufacturing Open Lot Storage Zone, to allow for the needs of current operations and potential similar uses in the Lake Havasu vicinity. Staff recommends approval of the rezone, subject to conditions.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any questions or comments of the applicant? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the staff recommendations.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for item number two. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could you identify the makers of the motions, please?
I'm sorry, yes. Commissioner Gabrielson, right, and Commissioner Walker. Seconded.
Thank you.
Item number three.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcels number 30650004C from an agriculture residential 10 acre minimum lot size to agriculture residential 2 acre minimum lot size to allow for the creation of four parcels. The department recommends approval of this rezone request, subject to conditions.
Is the applicant present, item number three? The applicant is not here. We have no speakers on the item. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. I'll move we approve per staff recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Posnell, a second by Commissioner Gabrielson. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 20413059 from an agriculture residential 9 acre minimum lot size to an agriculture residential 5 acre minimum lot size zone to allow for the creation of two residential parcels. Staff recommends approval with conditions.
Is the applicant present for item number four? Okay. Any questions or comments to the applicant? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the staff recommendations.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Gabrielson's. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 5A.
5A is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to Board of Supervisors Resolution Numbers 2010, 230, and 2012, 21, to amend Condition Number Three of BOS Resolution Number 210, 230, and of BOS Resolution 212, 031—or, excuse me, 021, regarding the timing of NEPA and WAPA approvals under the amendments of the Mojave County General Plan for properties within the Sterling area plan in the Sterling vicinity. The commission considered this item at their meeting on September 10th and continued it to their October meeting so the applicant could submit requested information and evidence on the progress—to date—and a timeline for completion. The department has received neither of these items. Staff recommends approval for the proposed amendment to Condition Number Three of the BOS Resolution Number 210, 230, and BOS Resolution 212, 21, regarding the timing of NEPA and WAPA approvals.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
The applicant is present. We have several speakers on the item. Would you like to address the commission or wait till after the speakers?
I might as well go first.
All right.
I'm Robert Hibbs. I represent Sterling Solar and some adjoining landowners under this application. I too would like to express my condolences for John Montgomery, who worked with us extensively on this project and was a good person to work with. Sterling Solar is seeking on behalf of itself and associated landowners to extend the timeframe to comply with the NEPA National Environmental Protection Agency transmission standards. This proposal does have the support of the county staff. The existing resolution stated two years was the time necessary to get all of these permits. There are many studies necessary in addition to the environmental impact statement that need to be completed. You can ask Chris Ballard about the timeline that it might take to get an environmental impact statement. I'm told that it's two years. That's what our—we had to go through an RFP process to hire an environmental consultant, and that's their estimate of the time to complete, and that's what we need to come—the remaining thing we need to complete. We have been making substantial and ongoing progress with the project. We have spent many hundreds, thousands of dollars in completing revised stu— required studies. The—a couple of those are the system impact study, and if we can have the overlay or overhead camera. That is the cover sheet of the system impact study for the project that has been completed. Additionally, we had to do a facility—interconnection facilities study. There is the cover sheet for the facilities study, and that took a well over a year and cost between $2,000 and $300,000. Mr. Azami is worried about water rights with another project that came up. We do have water rights for the project. Those are complete. And the—the reason that we're giving you just the cover sheets for these studies is that they're proprietary and they're confidential. We're very concerned about these—this information falling into the hands of competitors. This hearing provides a direct example of that issue. Carl Fouchet, who is your chairman, is a voting member and is also the manager and owner of HV Power, which is a direct competitor of the—of this project. You'll see a screenshot of the—of the records of the Arizona State Corporations Commission showing Mr. Fouchet is owner and manager of HV Power. Further, Sterling Solar has had to sue Mr. Fouchet to force him to stop interfering with our project. This case, in the United States Federal District Court in Arizona, resulted in an order that Mr. Fouchet refrained from any actions that would, quote, interfere with the development of the project. Now, hopefully, you know, none of the rest of you have—have had to get any input from Mr. Fouchet with regard to this matter, but we think that—that everybody should at least know the positions. Now, all that having been said, we'd like to suggest—
Let us stop there just for a minute, Mr. Hibbs, because HV Power is not a direct competitor of anybody—of anybody. It's not even doing anything. So I don't know how you can come off and just start blaring away.
Thank you. I'll proceed. That having been said, we would like to suggest that Sterling be allowed an additional three years to finish our permitting and come up with—and then come back and report to you again. We have yet to finish the environmental impact statement, and—and that should take a couple of years. This amendment is not changing any zoning. It will allow us to proceed in developing a project that will provide good employment and dramatically increase the taxes paid to the county. We've been working with this property and owned it for over twenty years. Thank you very much for your attention.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a question. Could you relate your comments right now that you made with the land use ordinance that we are basically reviewing? How do you relate those together? I mean, if you have any issue with a member of this commission, I think it is a civil matter, you need to take it outside of the land use ordinance. This is a land use ordinance commission, and the commission was very specific about, you know, the points that we made about, you know, the ongoing progress.
Yes.
Had nothing to do with, you know, distracting the commission with, you know, a personal issue or whatever that, you know, we don't know. And none of—I—I—this is the first time I heard about this comment that, you know, you have. So I really—could you show me, you know, how you relate the land use ordinance with the comments you made?
Now, what I can say is that this committee acts as a body, and they—they discuss things amongst themselves, and people should understand that—the relationship that we have with some of the members, I think that's informative, whether it impacts your decision or not, at least you should know.
We have no relationship.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So we still have to make a decision amongst ourselves or individually as how we want to rule on this, and we ask for additional information to be provided, and because there's a potential personal issue with you, we are not allowed to see that information, so how are we supposed to be able to make a determination without seeing all sides of the story? You know, and that's—that's what we're here for, and that's—that's what we're supposed to be doing, is—is looking at all the information that's available, and I got a problem with that. You know, we asked, it was a simple request, I would like to see that, I get—you know, I feel like just because we don't have the final say that—that potentially we're just being kind of stepped over here and taken right to the Board of Supervisors, and then what's the point of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe that, you know, you think that, you know, this commission is uneducated about, you know, this subject matter. The fact is that, you know, we—we are—we've been looking into all these different applications. We are educated about the process. We know how sophisticated it is, and the most important part of it, which, you know, all these national and international companies at one time, they were pursuing this, it was because of the federal money. September of 2009 was the time that, you know, all these different companies that we know of were trying to get their foot into the door, and that door was shot. I really do not know, you know, how you would be able to even finance a project in the billions of dollars, because no private sector that we know of is going to invest into solar unless they have—they get their hands on federal money. So, you know, the very first element in the last two years ago or so, you mentioned that Simmons is on the board and they're going to go forward. Now Simmons is out. You don't have any provider, you don't have any financial backing or federal, you know, like that. There's very simple things that we have, is certain elements should be in order. We've seen these, you know, with Cobra, we've seen it with that. There is a process that they have, and you have to follow that. You are jumping ahead and you're trying to just, you know, keep the zoning, but yet nothing else is in place. The reports that you provided is dated 2011.
And— It's 2013.
I'm speaking.
Sorry.
It's 2014. So when you're talking about that, you're evaluating and you're going ahead and all that, this is 2014, end of 2014, and you haven't been able—last thirty days, we asked you to provide all your documents to the staff. You didn't even provide one single sheet, and you show up with two cover sheet showing the 2011 and 2013 dates, which, you know, can be updated or whatever in a matter of a few seconds. So this commission is educated about, you know, the application, it is educated about, you know, the solar system, and has nothing to do with your competition or anything like that. So, you know, I just want to let you know that it is an insult to this commission when you come before us and you start, you know, accusing directly and indirectly, you know, that members of this commission are, you know, teaming up or whatever because of your competition or whatever. Okay, so just want to let you know.
Okay. And I do—I meant no offense to you. Clearly, you understand the elements necessary to proceed with a PV project. You demonstrated that with your discussions of the earlier application. I have no difficulty with that. It is a complicated process, and we are at the point of issuing or preparing the environmental impact statement. We've gone through all of that RFP process. These—these cover sheets that I show you have hundreds of pages behind them that it would be very valuable to people that are looking to do projects, and—and we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to obtain that information. Where you are inaccurate is that there is no interest from national or international groups to develop these. My partner and I just spent the last five days with an international group that flew in from three different countries to deal with us on this very topic that has well the money to spend to do it. They are interested in doing that. We had three or four other groups, all of them are under non-disclosure agreements, and I can't reveal them, but I can swear to you that we are in active negotiation to get this completed. And if we're—if we're successful, the county benefits greatly. If we aren't, then this overlay goes away in another period of time and off we go again. So I think that—that we deserve the opportunity because of the efforts we put in, and I think the county deserves the opportunity of having this beneficial. But I in no way tried to impugn you or the remaining portions of—of your committee, but I thought that it was important to—to let you know that it's clear that Mr. Fouchet and we do not have any relationship, but we did sue him in federal court in order to get him to stop messing with our project, and that is important for everybody's background knowledge on how this project proceeds. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The zoning change is a very minimal part of this whole process. You have so many other factors that you have to take care of, and this is the shortest distance, you know, that you can change, you know, a zoning if you have other elements in place. So what you're saying is that, you know, you're—you're creating an opportunity for the county. I disagree with you 100% because by labeling that area, and especially large area that you have, you are preventing others that might be interested to do certain things with smaller projects like 40 acre, 80 acre, or 20 even acre in that area, because there is discourage, because they think that, you know, this project is going to come, because that's how unfortunately some of them—they—some of the property owners, they are not educated about the process. So in a way, you are taking away a opportunity from the county because there may be other people on the sideline that they can do other things with it, and now they're waiting for a vision investment that, in my opinion, nobody is going to invest unless they have budget from the federal government, and that is not available. So what I'm trying to tell you is that even if you reverted back to AR, you still can pursue— pursue everything else that you can do about WAPA, about, you know, the international and all that. And in a matter of three to four months, which in the time of this project is nothing, you can get your zoning back.
Clearly that is not the case. We are attempting to continue it now and we're getting confronted by yourself and your committee. So if I go to an investor, which we are talking to right now and say that, that the county is resolved to withdraw the zoning for PV, then that effectively stops the project. And if that's the intent, I understand.
Yeah.
Section 1603 of the Internal Revenue Code allowed for tax breaks for this. It does expire in 2016. There are many other international groups that don't need the US government money to get this completed and we've spent the last three or four days in financial analysis on the cost and the PPA price and the transmission cost and all of this with a bunch of, of, some of them being counters and some of them executives with authority to get this completed. So I, I'm sorry that you have no faith in our project. We do. Thank you.
We have two additional speakers. Chad Vilmore, Villemore?
Good morning, Commissioner. Chad Villemore from Golden Shores Fire Department, Fire Chief. Yeah, as you know, the, the downspend of our economy, our assessed value in our area has gone from 33 million down to 15 and our little district is struggling. So this little project, even though it's in the future, it kind of gives us a little extra tax break, you know, or not break, but there's assessment, you know, that we're going to get some extra money from the assessed value if this project ever goes. Our little school district, you know, just the kids in it, it went from 268 kids, now we're down to about 120, you know, and our little community is suffering. So these kind of projects kind of give us some hope that this area is going to grow a little bit and we need it, you know, and it's sure it's going to help the county, but these little districts, you know, up and down the valley and all over, we're struggling. You know, we have a shoestring budget as it is and then cut it in half, it's, we're crazy. So it's, I'd appreciate it if you, you consider it. I mean, it's a long-term project, I know, but it's going to be a good tax base for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Nace?
Chairman Flouche, rest of the members of the commission. Yes, I'm Tony Nace and I represent several parcels that are adjoining to, joining and then some that are quite a ways away from this, but all in the general vicinity of, of the property. That would include Westland River Holdings, Furnace Properties, Morland Holdings, Brad Boys Properties. I am, and, and I think most of you probably know, I, I own the Arizona Gateway also at I-95 and I-40. I'm completely at a loss as to why you wouldn't extend the zoning on this project when everyone knows that we're, the process of going through these projects are very, very time consuming, very difficult at best. And the potential tax gain and the potential employment in not only Mojave County, Lake Havasu, Kingman, Bullhead area is huge. The potential money that the county can make can bring this county back from the desperate numbers that the fire chief was just talking about and that we see across the board in every community. We need big projects, we need, the state of Arizona would be so proud of a project of this magnitude. The country needs it, the state needs it, and it, I would think that Mojave County would be jumping up and down to have an opportunity like this. It has all the requirements and, and I'd, I'd have to completely disagree with you, Mr. Ozami, that the small guy can go in and do these kind of projects. Most of these parcels that I own are 40, 60, 80, 160 and we've put those together because on a small scale, as a builder myself, I can't go out and do a project of that size. I can't even tie into the, to the, to the power grid. WAPA doesn't want to talk to me. My properties are too small. Basically WAPA's cutoff is, hey, look, we're, we'll talk to you about 100 megawatts, but other than that, you know, we're, we're really not your guy. So to say that, that small guys are going to go out and do all these little project around, it's just not real. I run into the same thing. I tried to do a solar on my property at Franconia, at the Gateway East project. And although the power company was willing to try to talk to us, the whole interconnect agreement was going to take 10 years. Those are the kind of things that, that a small developer like myself runs into. So it makes perfect sense for me to go ahead and say, hey, look, I'll put my project in with you guys, let's, let's help each other get this done. And that's what we've done on a couple of the parcels. Now the parcels that aren't in the zone are going to benefit because we'll have businesses, we'll have residential, we'll have other things that will serve the community of the five or 600 employees that this project's going to have. And I don't know what that particular number is, but you got to figure it's, it's a 15 to 20-year project. If you take the zoning away, it, it does, it does nothing. I mean, the project's not going to, then nothing else is going to happen out there in the near foreseeable future. The economy's not strong enough to make it a residential development and besides the scale of it would be pretty astronomical in today's money. So I, I adamantly ask you to reconsider and please give the extension.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess there is a misunderstanding about, you know, when I said that, you know, other projects, I didn't mean to that they're going to be solar. There would be other applications of those zoning that is being discouraged by, you know, having a larger scale project like this labeled as that. So, you know, there are going to be, you know, other opportunities out there, you know, manufacturing, all that because we have railroad, you have, you know, a very, you know, good site for a lot of possibilities. So I didn't mean that, you know, it's going to be solar on a smaller scale. It would be other applications that right now are being discouraged. We are not going to hold it up because, you know, it takes only four months to rezone it. And if, you know, you mentioned about, you know, the investment, the possibilities that, you know, as I said, we are educated about it, there are a lot of elements that has to be in place for a project like this to happen. If and when a project like this happens, yes, you're absolutely right, but the possibilities are very, doesn't exist at this time unless, you know, there would be ducks in a row and connections with, you know, the federal money or other assets, billions of dollars. So basically what you're saying is, it's not going to hold you up. We would be able to, and again, this is what I'm going to recommend to the commission, is to revert it back to AR with condition that upon the, you know, you providing the documents from WAPA and all that, we would basically go back to, you know, the proper zoning if you need it at that time. But right now there are a lot of elements that are missing. The only thing that you're asking is to zoning to be changed and I don't think that is right. Thank you.
Well, I, can I speak anymore?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, being a developer and in this business for 40 years, I just have to tell you, I'm sorry, but you're 100% wrong on that. When I go talk to anybody about real estate, the same reason that you gave me extensions on the Gateway East project at Franconia is because I have to be able to represent that that property is what the county would like to see. It's a positive direction, it's going forward, it's what the county would like to see. When you take it away, you put a very negative feedback for anybody and any buyer will tell you, and anybody who's trying to sell anything will tell you, you have to eliminate the negatives. You put a negative in and taking the zoning away, which I, for the life of me, I can't see why, because it doesn't hurt anything to leave it in place. It's very similar to my industrial parks. The zoning is there, maybe nobody's coming to the door right now because of the economy, but they won't come if the property's not zoned. So it's, again, I, I have to say, I'm pretty adamant, I've tied up my, my life savings in Mojave County to try to develop property and I know that the gentleman from Sterling have also. And this project is moving faster than, than any of the other solar projects I've seen, especially on federal land. And to, to throw a wall in front of them by taking away their zoning serves no purpose, no purpose at all. All it does is, is put a negative light on the development of this project and really questions the credibility of, of, of the decision of the council. In my mind, there's, I see no basis for it. There's no negative to extending it.
All right.
That I can see. Thank you.
Any questions or comments to the speaker?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just, I'm struggling with the fact that, I mean, again, and I understand what Mr. Nace is saying as well as it was what Mr. Hibs was saying, but, you know, we made a simple request for some additional information and then again, to have somebody come up and start attacking because of a potential personal interference or relationship and assuming and then, and then, and then making a statement further that we're attacking back, I don't see that we were attacking back. We, we made a very simple request for additional information. I mean, I need, I need to hear both sides of the story. I want to hear both sides of the story. I, I can't make a good decision without knowing all the information and I don't understand what the problem is with not providing us with the additional simple request that we asked for. So that's all.
Again, I think that just goes back to proprietary information. You know, and the fact that somebody else might use it for another, for their own personal gain.
Yes, Crystal.
So then we're, so then we're, we're, and we're sworn in as commissioners and to uphold and to be forthright and to have somebody make the assumption that we're going to turn around and take proprietary information so that we can make our decision based on this, this item and then we're going to take that proprietary information and do something with it? I mean, that, that, I got, I'm, so I'm being accused of, of impropriety or misuse of my position and, and, and I got a problem with that.
Well, thank you. Okay, Crystal.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I actually, I like, got a question for the original applicant. I wasn't here at the one meeting when, you know, prior. I read through everything, but then I was listening and in, on the here, it says it strikes out the two years that you're asking for. You did mention three years.
Correct.
Okay. Now it depends on the NEPA and the WAPA. And according to your things that you put up there, 2011, 2013, what is your expectancy to actually finish those?
And I tried to, the, the remaining element of it is actually the environmental impact statement, which is NEPA, National Environmental Protection Agency.
How long are you looking at to complete that?
It would, they take about two years to finish.
Okay.
So my recommendation was to say, give us three, let us get it done, make sure we've got the time-
But yet you also mentioned that in 2016, something expired.
Oh, that's a federal income tax benefit that-
Okay.
-that Mr. Ozami was talking about that allowed people to-
So technically, actually, you would have to get by 2016, get your-
No.
NEPA-
No, we, that, that tax benefit was something put forth by the federal government for a period of time. It expired. So now we have to build without that tax benefit. It doesn't-
Okay.
So you can't build it, just says you don't get tax benefits as, as readily as you did first.
Okay.
So it's just the environmental impact statement. It would take two years, I'm saying three, just to make sure we've got enough time.
Okay. Just so I understand clearly, the documentations that the commissioners asked for the last time you were here, why were none of those turned in to the staff?
They requested documentation showing progress on the-
Okay.
-approach. These, these documents, just these two have very proprietary information on interconnection that, that we can't reveal. If we put, give it, and Mr. Posnell is concerned about me, I'm not saying that you would disclose them, but if I put them here, it becomes public record and then everybody has it.
Okay. I was just inquiring because I know that when they talk about progress, progress isn't outlining all your financial, all your backing and all your private information. Progress is simply showing letters of dedication from different companies, investors of their interest to move forward with this, you know-
Right.
-that, and you didn't even come up with any of that.
I, well, I can-
And that's why I think the board is looking at you going, you know, it's really not about you putting everything out there, it's about you showing us that you have something to want us to keep the zone there and locked for you where as Mr. Ozami was saying, that other companies or smaller businesses around you didn't want to come in or don't have that capability at this time because you do have that locked. Okay? It wasn't a personal attack on you, like, you know, you were coming at us. It was simple. Progress means a small piece of paper, small intuit that say, yes, I have this, yes, this company is updated, yes, this is still here showing us that there is progress in the interest of your project.
And, and the project has, we'll call it two different courses. One is the permit process and I tried to demonstrate that here. The other one is the investor process, which Mr. Ozami is worried about.
Okay, but a letter can be, you know, the staff has, you know, you can not have Mr. Chairman Flouche, like a Chris Demis Ballard and Nicholas Hunt can look at those, strike the name of the investor and still say, yes, that is proper documentation of progress.
But the, the, when I, when you go into a project like this and if you're dealing with a company that's going to spend a billion or two billion, whatever that number is, they will require of you a non-disclosure agreement that says you cannot even discuss the fact that you're talking to them and, because they, they are international in scope and they don't want their competitors to know. So I'm under, I can't do it.
I also understand that if they were to reverse the zoning, that some of your investors, because then you have to redo it, will pull out? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I, I-
And Mr. Posnell, he, he works on the title of our property and he, he could probably illuminate somewhat that we've been active in, in trying to get out title reports to show to groups. And we are, we're working really hard to get this done and it's a large enough project. It isn't easy to do. You're dealing with, with companies that don't want anybody else to know they're looking at it.
Okay. If I were to ask you, if in six months, can you show me documentation that shows the actual progress, that you have these investors, can you bring something so forth to this table that would want us to keep that project locked and open for you?
I'd hope so. I can't tell you the timeline, but I, I'm hoping in six weeks it gets finished. When, when, when we are to the point that we can reveal it, we want to reveal it because that's positive for us, it's positive for the county.
Right.
And so we have every incentive to do that. But, but I have difficulty when I sign a non-disclosure agreement with a company to say that I'm going to reveal it then on a public stage.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gabrielson, just for your information, the RFP that the gentleman is talking about could have been started back in 2011 at the same time. I mean, the timing, you know, they could have, if they really, the project is a progress drawing forward, you know, it could have been taken care of. You don't, you know, wait until, you know, a certain time and then do it. It could have been done-
Actually, that's not the case because the, the 2013 report indicates the, the route in which the transmission will occur. And without that, we couldn't tell what areas, it's not just our property that undergoes an environmental impact statement, it's the entire lines of, of the grid that are impacted by that.
But this project is started back in 2008 or even, you know, at that time or something over that.
You don't have to remind me of that.
Right. So I'm saying that, you know, it is not something that just started in 2011. It's been ongoing process.
Absolutely.
There were some going on and the grid was vacancy on the grid and all that was basically at one time talked or at this year-
Now, where do you get that information?
Well, from the meetings we had here, you know, from the applicant before you. So we had that information that, you know, that the, the same area had some certain thing going on, but the RFP that you're talking about could have started long before.
Not true.
So you're, right now you're saying, I, I want to send out an RFP that's going to take about two, three years. It seems like, you know, what's, what's going on right now, you're just basically doing the rezoning, you know, for, I don't know whether the reason is a speculation or whatever- is a speculation or whatever the fact is, but there are a lot of other factors involved. So I basically expressed my opinion that the zoning change is the simplest part of the whole process.
I would agree.
So basically, what you're saying is that, you know, even if it is AR, you can pursue that and we can put the condition in there that as soon as you show that progress, we would basically revert it back to the proper zone.
Let me talk a little bit about the process of getting the interconnection. It is a whole series of reports that need to come out. But you can't do, you have to do the system impact study, you have to do the facility study. Then, we have to go through and deal with who is going to be our environmental consultant. That's the request for proposal. That has been completed. That consultant is chosen. And now, we've got to go through another process with the federal government as it relates to initiating that progress.
If that environmental consultant is chose, how come you didn't provide any documents that, you know, you have an agreement with that consultant? It's a very simple thing.
I didn't realize that you needed to.
They're not asking for disclosing anything. All you had to do is to just provide from the investor, letter of intent, or from this consultant, that yes, I'm in agreement right now with this applicant about, you know, this particular job. You have simply provided those simple documents.
There are probably a thousand additional documents that I could have provided. They tend to start to paint a picture for our project that competitors would very much like to know. And so, I tried to provide you with sufficient documentation.
You just said that you chose the consultant.
Could I finish speaking, please?
You said that you just chose your consultant. So that is not something that would be top secret.
We chose six consultants, went through, but I tried to pick out the most important, the most significant elements of this process. As I say, there are probably 20 or 30 elements to the process. I didn't bring all the elements. I did bring elements to show that we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we are proceeding as regularly as we can to get through this process. All right? It is a long, involved process, and you admit to that. It is, but that's, we're doing our best on this. It is significant. It's significant to us. We've relied on the county and its zoning to try to help us so that we could go market this and bring in the appropriate investors, not the federal government. This has nothing to do with the federal government. And, and so, we are working hard on it.
Thank you, Mr. Hibs.
You're welcome.
Actually, I have a question for Ms. Ballard and Mr. Haunt and maybe Mr. Taylor. During the process, since I wasn't here when it initially started, okay, and I missed the last one to get, you know, a lot of the input. During the process of this land and his changes in the recent, has he kept in contact with the staff and been working prominently with the staff on this? On, you know, developments, changes, what's going on, keeping you guys updated, other than this recent documentation that did not come in?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Gabrielson, given our recent turnovers in staff, that's a difficult question to answer.
Okay.
I really don't, do not know what conversations he made, may have had with prior staff. The only conversations I have had with him have been as these, as these items have been coming forward.
Have we had any other interest in the surrounding property or the attached property to this facility for any other growth of businesses or interest of businesses have come in in the last four or five years?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Gabrielson, I'm not aware of any. That does not mean they have not been talking to other staff members.
Okay. And we haven't had, I notice there's not any real negative feedback or people not wanting this project.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Gabrielson, we've not heard any direct objection since the, since the item was originally approved. There were some concerns with the railroad and some concerns with how they accessed the property early on. We have not heard a repeat of those concerns.
All right.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments?
I have a comment on this. I understand this is a very large project and dealing with WAPA. I'm involved in a project right now where we're trying to deal with WAPA, and I know how hard it is. I don't see any harm on leaving this thing open and working with these guys. I mean, if they are working with investors that are coming to the table, I can see how this would be negative if they were to lose some zoning. This project's probably going to help bring infrastructure to this area so the smaller guys can build. I don't, I don't see a problem here, guys.
I agree. I don't see why we shouldn't be able to leave it like it is. The property does meet its everything that's supposed to for the criteria. We aren't here, I mean, yes, we have to take lots of things into consideration, but as long as we don't have public feedback and negativity, there hasn't been anybody really dwelling, you know, pushing that they want to, I don't see the harm in leaving it. Maybe, you know, shortening it to the two-year or one year even, just to see, you know, with the WAPA and stuff. He said it, you know, six weeks to six months, he would probably have some of that coming in. But I think if we pay a little more attention and shorten the area, creating him to have to come up with more of the paperwork and maybe put a little fire underneath of them, that way, you know, we can see the progress he's truly making in these investors that I would hate to cut them off because I know how hard it is. An investor will turn away as soon as the property turns back.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Well, I guess it's appropriate to chime in. I understand the value of the documentation and keeping it close to the vest. And I understand limiting distribution of the documentation and the rationale behind that. I don't appreciate the tone with which that was handled and found that extremely offensive as well. But I have to look out for the people and the, to the benefit of the people, not necessarily the benefit of the applicant. And as was noted, there is no one here against this particular proposal. And I too don't believe that, I think by making the decision to hold back on, or change the zoning change back, will be more devastating than going forward, leaving it in place. But I got to tell you that I'm surprised that some of the information that could have been made available, not necessarily proprietary, but would definitely lean to prove more progress, should have been submitted. Nothing is nothing. Something shows progress. And I've seen these measurements, especially in the MVIDD areas and others that look for forward progress, measured in sentences, not books and volumes. And I'm a little surprised that something didn't come forward. I'm almost of the opinion, you mentioned three months, you mentioned six months, I don't know about two years. I would be more inclined to see another opportunity to give us something. I'm positive that the program is beneficial. You wouldn't stand there and say you're negotiating with people if you weren't. But I'm interested in somebody going halfway. Give me a timeframe that we can get something. Not two years. Two years in this economy and this world is too long.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Crystal and also Commissioner Buck. I think that, you know, we should maybe provide like 12 months' time so they can, you know, bring in, in some progress in 12 months. As I said, from 2010 until now, I don't see any. But let's, let's do it, you know, 12 months and evaluate in 12 months. I don't think it's going to do harm.
I would like to see that myself.
I'll entertain a motion if there's no more discussion.
I just want to know how you feel, Jack.
Do you want me to make?
Go ahead.
I'll gladly make the motion to, let's, I don't know where this, I'll move that we approve this item per staff recommendation, limiting the timeframe to a 12-month period with the caveat of the change of, limiting it to a 12-month timeframe.
With condition of progress.
With the condition of additional progress. Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Poznell and a second by Commissioner Buck. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 5B.
Mr. Chairman, item 5B is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the BOS Resolution 2010, 231, and 2012, 22, to amend condition number four of BOS Resolution 2010, 231, and of BOS Resolution 2012, 22, regarding the timing of NEPA and WAPA approvals under the amendment of the Sterling area plan in the Sterling vicinity. Based on the commission's decision on 5A, the department would recommend approval of an amendment to condition number four of BOS Resolution 2010, 231, and of BOS Resolution 2012, 22, regarding the timing and of the NEPA and WAPA approvals, granting, giving one year, basically a one-year extension with the applicants to report back to this body within one year on their progress.
Yeah, okay. We have two speakers on this item again.
Yes, I guess we're just going back through the second stage of the same process. But yes, I think that the 12 months would be a good start. Thank you.
Commissioner, I don't want to repeat everything I just said earlier. So, I mean, basically, I think the 12 months would be a good, good start. Thank you.
Okay. I forgot to ask if the applicant was present, but we know he's present. Do you have anything else you want to say, Mr. Hibs? Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion on item 5B.
I'll make a motion to approve per new staff recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ozami and a second by Commissioner Gabrielson. Item 5B, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 5C.
Mr. Chairman? Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, 5C is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to BOS Resolution 2010, 233, and Resolution 2012, 23, to amend condition number nine of BOS Resolution 2010, 233, and condition number three of BOS Resolution 2012, 23, incorporating that condition regarding the timing of NEPA and WAPA approvals required under a rezone of properties within the Sterling area plan to establish an energy overlay zone. Based on the commission's actions under 5A and 5B, the staff recommends approval for an amendment to those conditions that the applicant have one year to make progress on the WAPA and NEPA processes and that they report back to this body within that one year with reports of that progress.
Okay. Thank you. The applicant is present. Mr. Nace, would you like to speak again? No. Mr. Vladimir? No. Okay. Close the public comment period. Okay. Any questions or comments, discussion?
Did we need to ask the applicant again?
I did.
Okay. I'm sorry. The record didn't catch that.
I'll entertain a motion. Item number 5C.
I'll make a motion to approve with a revised timeline according to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gabrielson and a second by Commissioner Buck. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six.
Mr. Chairman, item number six is evaluation of a request for a zoning use permit on Assessor's Parcel 310, 25, 007C, for a secondary residence in an AR agriculture residential eight-acre minimum lot size zone in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval of this request, subject to conditions.
Is the applicant present for item number six? The applicant is not present. We have no speakers on the item. Any questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. I'll move we approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Poznell and a second by Commissioner Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven.
Mr. Chairman, item number seven is a request for a zoning use permit on Assessor's Parcel Number 331, 19089F, for a secondary residence in an agriculture residential five-acre minimum lot size zone in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with conditions.
Okay. Is the applicant present for item number seven? Applicant is present. There are no speakers on the item. Would you like to address the commission? No? Okay. Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. I'll move we approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Poznell and a second by Commissioner Buck. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Chairman Flusch, say. Members of the commission, good morning. Item number eight is the discussion possible action of the 2015 Mojave County General Plan Review and the selection and appointment of a four-member subcommittee to guide the effort and assisting in conducting the community workshops, as well as acceptance of the project timeline. The 2015 general plan, of course, will guide the county's growth through 2035. And it says, this item was reviewed in September 10's Planning Commission meeting. And we also want to understand that the Arizona state statutes do give clear guidance to the responsible parties for this general plan adoption. And the Arizona state statutes 11804 specifically states, "The commission self-formulate and the board of supervisors shall adopt or re-adopt a long-term comprehensive plan for the development of the area jurisdiction in the manner prescribed by this article." The primary purpose of the 2015 general plan review is to incorporate the new state statutes, update the necessary statistical data, update the current maps and exhibits, and update the elements as requested by the planning commission. As part of the review, the department is recommending the planning and commission appoint this subcommittee, and that is staff's recommendation today. Thank you. And I believe that Nick has a comment also.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a few points on this item upfront, because there's a lot of confusion. We received a lot of phone calls and, and I just want to make sure there's a clear understanding. The general plan review and readoption as a major amendment must be completed within one calendar year, which is in this case, 2015. So I just want to make the point, we are early. We're starting very early, so make sure we have all the available time through the calendar year. Also, I like to emphasize again that the general plan review will be done in accordance with Arizona state statutes, which provides that the Planning and Zoning Commission shall formulate it and the board of supervisors shall readopt it. Accordingly, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be in charge of formulating the general plan and making recommendations to the board of supervisors for adoption. Therefore, each supervisory district will be represented in the process by two planning and zoning commissioners. The board of supervisors is required also in statutes to adopt written procedures to provide effective, early and continuous public participation in the development of the general plan. As pointed out by- As pointed out by Hal, the Commission had a public workshop here in the last meeting in September, and now it's considering the procedure, this procedure that we're talking about, and the next item will be the Public Participation Plan. One of the goals stated in that Public Participation Plan will be that the public participation must be thorough and the entire review process will be a top priority. All public comments for changes and modifications will be presented to and considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. A webpage will be also set up by the Mojave County Development Services Department website, which will continuously post and update all information and documents for the general plan review project. The website will also provide an opportunity to the public for submitting information and requests in regards of the general plan review. All information collected from the public will be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration, and all correspondence received from the public through the website will be answered in writing. The responsibility of the subcommittee that we are talking about will be to conduct an initial review and discussion of the general plan review comments and proposals received from the public and staff, and to evaluate and make recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The subcommittee will also attend four public workshops in different geographical areas of the county, which will be in the areas of Lake Havasu City, South Mojave Valley, Kingman, and the Beaver Dam area. All information gathered from the public at the workshops and through the website will be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and discussed again in public hearings at the Planning and Zoning Commissions' January, February, April, and May meetings. We give another month, just in case if the Commission wants another meeting, and around the month of July, as required by Arizona State statutes, a draft copy of the proposed 2015 general plan review will be sent for review and comment to all interested, affected, and statutorily required agencies for a 60-day review period. And these are the agencies, there are many agencies, but these are the cities, the adjacent counties, affected federal agencies, and so forth. And finally, to meet the December 15th deadline for possible adoption by the Board of Supervisors, the draft general plan will be discussed at the meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Supervisors from September to December, as many times as required by the Commission and the Board, to allow the Board the adoption of the amended general plan by the end of December 2015. And I just want to, I appreciate the opportunity making these items clear.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. We have one speaker, Mark Schaefer. Actually, I think you're on number nine, but... Yeah, that's fine. I just not realize that.
My name is Mark Schaefer. I live at 4054 West Hiller Drive in Meadview. I have to express the feelings that my community has been giving to me over the last several months, as we've been bringing up this discussion about citizens' participation, more specifically, citizens representing the five districts sitting on the board, you know, sitting on the subcommittee. And rather than give you my spiel over and over again, I'm here to ask you, why is it that you feel uncomfortable with having citizens representing the five districts sitting on that subcommittee, as they did in 2005? Now, I just heard a comment by Mr. Hunt saying that the Board of Supervisors will be representing, will have representatives from their district sitting on that commission. Well, that'd be all of you. That's a quorum. That can't happen. So you'll have to limit to four, as I understand it. So if that's the case, and we are having all of you guys on that commission, on that subcommittee, that's a big problem. You're not representing the people. So what I'm here to do to ask now is find out whether or not, why you feel uncomfortable with having citizens serve on the subcommittee. I know that you don't like it, so let's have a really adult discussion about it. Unless you prefer to have this a motion made and have it brought before the Board, I'm fine with that. But the people in my community have asked me to ask you why there is such a problem with allowing citizens to actually participate on the subcommittee.
Go ahead.
Well, basically, I'd just like to hear that discussion. I mean, if you, if you have a problem with citizens on there, I'd like to hear it straight from you and not have someone play the charade of caring about it.
Well, I don't think the Commission actually set the guidelines for this anyway. I think it was...
Oh, well, I...
If I'm...
Then that's a problem here, because on the agenda, there is no discussion of reestablishing whatsoever a citizens committee.
Mr. Chairman?
It's not on there.
Just a second. Let's let Mr. Hunt answer that question.
Mr. Chairman, what is the exact question? I don't understand.
Repeat your question, Mark.
I understand, and there's a growing feeling in my community that the county and members within the Mojave County hierarchy are opposed to having citizens participate on the subcommittee representing the five districts. Is this true?
Well, and I don't know what subcommittee you're referring to, but what...
The subcommittee, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Maybe I should clarify, the subcommittee that is about to review the general plan.
Right. What, what we have, we have a formula that we are using right now. We are in the process of redoing the county zoning ordinance, and that was a formula that this commission selected, where they appointed four members of the commission to work with staff and have a working subcommittee for working meetings to kind of have the initial discussion of the items and, and work through those. But every item will be brought back to this commission, and, and that's the point I was trying to make, that we want to bring every single item back to the commission and like to, to put it on the agenda if the commission agrees to, you know, the process starts in January, and it has to be completed in the same year, and like to put it on the commission agenda in January, February, April, and May. So it will be properly discussed, and the public has ample opportunity to comment on it, such as you're doing right now.
Mr. Chairman?
I am just a blue collar second. Yes.
Mark, first of all, there are only going to be four members of the commission. It is a state statute. The other thing that, you know, I'm a little bit confused is that, you know, you're more than welcome and your group to participate in any of those, you know, reviews, and, you know, you can make your comments and recommendations. So, I mean, you know, to be on the commission, on the, on the committee or not being on the committee, as long as, you know, you're heard or whoever has any comments, and I think that, you know, what, what, just like, you know, the zoning ordinance, that you and I are participating, and you're receiving emails, you're receiving packages, you know, you're more than welcome to participate, and you've done it, you have basically expressed your feelings about items, et cetera, on it. So basically, your comments are being heard, your comments are being presented to the commission and the committee, and then, you know, it's ultimately the Board of Supervisors who make the decision of adopting. So you have an opportunity to attend all these comments, I mean, the meetings that we have, you have a opportunity to present your case before the PNC Commission when they get all that review taken care of. Then you have the opportunity, and your citizens' participation group, to be heard by the Board of Supervisors. I, I really am a little bit confused that, you know, what else you're thinking that is you're going to be accomplishing by interjecting, you know, a different, you know, method or whatever. Could you explain that to me?
Sure. One thing that's fundamentally wrong with that is when you have four members of this commission, and there's five districts, whose district is going to be left out on that representation? Second, as far as general, the general plan goes, it is a shared vision by the county and the people it's supposed to represent. You can't say you have equal vision and representation if, and I say if, the people are not allowed to participate at the subcommittee level. What you have here on that, just for, is just the interest of four people, okay? Four commissioners, which you guys are highly educated.
Let me ask you this. When you say participate, how else you want to participate? You're going to be in the meetings, you're going to provide your documents and any comments you have, you have the opportunity to be before the commission, you have the opportunity to be before the Board of Supervisors. So when you say that you cannot participate, I don't understand that part.
When we have a conversation like we are having now, and we're sitting at the table, there's a lot of opportunities missed because of the way it's structured, these meetings are structured, that, that can engage in debate. A lot of these meetings that we have, and I know, because I've been there and you know this too, that are more presentation in form, that after the meeting, public meeting that is, you're, you're asked to please fill out a card, and you are asked to please hang out, talk, speak with us, and share your concerns. That is not the same thing as actually sitting at the table of discussion. Now, I appreciate what you're saying and asking me, but that still doesn't answer the question, why do you oppose citizens actually sitting on a subcommittee representing the five districts?
Because this is a state statute that, you know, you have the commission involved, and it has to be...
And that's the commission, that's exactly right.
It has to be, it has to be streamlined, there is a time limit, you know, on the, on the discussion, as Director Hunt said, is one year. So, you know, if, if you're, you know, become like an argumentative situation, that you cannot control the meeting, it's not going to be productive. But if you have your comments, and you present it to the committee, and you present it to the commission, and you present it to the Board of Supervisors, those are the decision-makers ultimately, which is the Board of Supervisors, to see if your points are, you know, valid, or they, they decide, you know, even the commission, even our, our comments are recommendations. We don't have any legislative, you know, power here. We make recommendations. So, you know, our voice is the same as yours. We make the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The five supervisors are the one that they have to evaluate, and they have to make the ultimate decision. It is not like, you know, they, they, they're going to just close the book and stamp it. They have to review, they have to, you know, ask their questions. So the ultimate power of the legislation is Board of Supervisors.
You're absolutely correct, 100%. That still does not exclude people from participating on that subcommittee. Your argument, from what I hear, is saying that you don't really trust the process, and time constraint is an issue.
That's not the point. No, Mark. I said you're participating, you are participating, you are making your comments, commission makes the comments, but I'm saying that all the data and all that information has to go before the Board of Supervisors, and you have ample opportunity to present yourself at the Board of Supervisors, but the ultimate decision has to come from the legislative, which is Board of Supervisor. So your comment and my comment is the same when it goes before the Board of Supervisors.
Actually, that's not true. If you're sitting on at the set table like you for, like you are now, and one of you disagreement, that's fine. But if I tried to disagree, or as you would say...
No matter what I think, in terms of agreement or disagreement, I have no legislative, legislative power.
Well, no, it's arguing that point. The point is simply, why do you have such opposition to having five members representing the five districts serving on that subcommittee?
Because you have the quorum. You cannot have that five people on the...
What do you mean, quorum? They're citizens, they're not part of the county.
No, I'm talking about this commission. You have to have four, because, you know, you cannot have five.
There's no disagreement there. What's wrong with having five citizens who are not county employees? Okay? It's very simple.
They can participate, they have full comments.
On the subcommittee?
Mark, all they have to do is just show up for the meeting.
Show up to the meeting and make your comments, and it will be recorded, the minutes are there, and the Board of Supervisor is going to read it.
You still don't, I, I...
Mr. Chairman? Mark, I think I know what you want. You want us to say, okay, Mark, go out there and find one person from each district to sit on this subcommittee that you want to form. And we're saying, we're not setting up a subcommittee, we're going by the rules that the staff has given us to go by, and it does not include, I don't believe, a subcommittee of, of, of citizens from each district. However, a citizen or two can show up from each district if they so choose to and participate in the meeting.
Okay, now we're getting to the truth of the matter, sir.
Well, the truth of the matter, that's the truth.
Yeah, that is the truth. So it has, the county has no intention of having, entertaining any discussion of having a subcommittee. These, you know, five members of the district are, you know, at the whim or call of the supervisor. They could pick them out. But you've just said, and now we know, that you have no intentions of ever having any discussion whatsoever.
That's not what I said.
Yes, you just...
No, I did not say that.
Would we like to...
What did I say to you? I said they have the opportunity to show up for...
You said...
What? Repeat it.
The staff repeated. You want to hear it?
Okay, Mark...
I'm not going to get into debate over what I said or what I didn't say.
That's the purpose of having a subcommittee, is to have that debate on issues that matter.
If staff tells us we have to have a subcommittee, then we'll do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mark, to have one person from each district in the meeting does not mean that, you know, that one person has the input of 40,000 or plus people in that district. So what we are saying is that anybody from the community who wants to participate and have their input via email, via participation in person, they can participate and they can bring, not, I don't think that, you know, I can represent, you know, 40,000 people, because I don't talk to 40,000 people. I don't believe that you represent 40,000 people in your district. So I'm saying that, you know, it is open to any citizen in the Mojave County to participate in the meeting. If they have a comment, they can make the comment. This body, the commission, the four commission here, is not legislative. I'm saying that, you know, it ultimately, all of our opinions, all of our recommendations has to go before the Board of Supervisors for them to evaluate and make a decision. So your voice is being heard as well as any other person in your district that they can participate in it. It doesn't have to be assigned to a committee. Your voice is being heard by Board of Supervisors, by the commission, time after time. But, you know, to impose your will in a certain way, I don't think that you're, you know, is constructive. I mean, you are going to have the same opportunity to represent your case, and anybody else like you, out of your district, the 40-plus thousand people, whoever wants to participate can do the same thing and can make their recommendation, and it would be heard by the Board of Supervisors ultimately. I'm just, that's my point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer, I just want to make sure, I don't understand, so ultimately, you just want to make, you really want to make sure that you are able to have discussion, not just fill out a comment card at the end of the meeting, but you want to be able to, while the subcommittee meeting is going on, to be able to interject if you believe that you've got information that would be pertinent to the, to the item that we're discussing at that time. Am I correct on that?
Not me personally. What I want to...
I mean, the public participation, I, okay, let me, let me retract that. I don't mean you personally, but, you know, by, by saying an individual from each of the five districts, or having that public participation, you, you're, you're wanting to make sure that the public can truly participate in those meetings and can be heard and can interject, and not just fill out a comment card at the end of the meeting, is that...
That would be the definition of a true public participation at the subcommittee level, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When, okay, when, before I was in this position, I attended the Corridor projects, okay? Mr. Hunt, you were there, and it was open to public. And were, were you present to those?
I was probably one of two who made every single meeting for the last...
Okay, I made almost, I made quite a few of them just after you started. Now, when I was there, I never filled out a card. I never got put on the back burner. I was able to stand up, I was able to raise my hand, I was as a public representative, I was not sitting up here. And you know what? I was able to make comments that actually people listened to. Mr. Hunt listened to them. Wow, you know what, that's, you know, okay, and then someone else would feed on that. Now, I know that that one kind of went down with the new highways and stuff, but if the meetings are structured like that, and they're actually public, and I've been to a few different public ones prior to being up here, and I never had to fill out a comment. public ones prior to being up here, and I never had to fill out a card, now it's always heard.
I was, uh, like I said, I was one of two people who attended every single meeting for those two years. They did have cards.
Well, uh, Mark, in our meetings that we have in the zoning ordinance, you've been attending that, there is no card, you engage yourself in the conversation just like any other member who is sitting at the table, and we discuss, and we talk, and we go over it, and you know, you bring your comments, just like that, isn't that the case?
You know, I want to compliment that subcommittee that was doing the ordinance.
Let's, let's keep this moving along here, Mark, forget the compliments.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's my point, are we on nine, are we on 10, are we on seven or eight?
Yeah, we're on number eight right now.
And I don't think this is appropriate discussion for the issue of number eight, do you?
Probably not, we should be...
No, it's supposed to be nine.
It's supposed to be on number nine, but we're already...
Taking care of both at the same time, I guess.
Then they'll have both eight and nine, so...
I have more input on one than the other, I'm just not sure what you want me to say.
Yeah, well, right now, we're on eight, and I think the public comment, we, 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 number eight has nothing to do with what you're talking about, especially setting up a subcommittee, and that's not the commission's, uh, venue to be doing that anyway.
Oh, well then, can I at least, someone enter...
Uh, Mr. Hunt.
A motion to have that...
You want to make a motion?
...before the staff to have it referred.
And, Mark, Mr. Hunt wants to say something.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to also remind that, that subcommittee will not have any special powers, and, and these meetings are intended to be, uh, working meetings, so they, uh, they will, they not intended to comply with the open meeting laws, and everybody will be able to speak, and that's a very informal meeting, and, and in fact, uh, like Mark pointed out, and he is very much welcome, he participated similar committee at the zoning ordinance review meeting, and his comments were very welcome, and, and actually some regulations were made, uh, based on Mark's comments, uh, that hasn't been presented to the commission yet, but it's well taken, so that's what I encourage on everybody else. But I also want to point out, if you don't mind, just what's the purpose of this whole project is, um, that, uh, this is not, the, the project is not intended, at least at this point, to, to rewrite the general plan and have brand-new general plan, because we just don't have the staff to do that, you know, that 15 years ago hired a consultant for, you know, half a million dollars to do that. This project was brought forth because, um, the county passed the 200,000, you know, population, and, uh, that would require to add additional elements to the general plan, so to comply with, uh, the statute, and, and that's intended to write those additional elements. And then, in addition to that, review something that, that is, is a burning issue and, or, or people want to discuss, like Mark wants to discuss, um, one of the items that we recommend to review, of course, is the, uh, economic data, because, uh, the economy changed, and so make sure we have the proper data in for the county. And then, I, I can think of, uh, the major issue that, uh, Mark and everybody else will want to discuss is the water and the groundwater resources, so, but, uh, I, this is pretty much what, uh, what we, we had in mind to, to address the important issues, the critical issues that, uh, that the commission and the board and, and the citizens want to bring up, but, uh, not to, to create a, a new general plan, I, I wanted to make sure everybody understands that, and then also the timeliness to complete this project. And of course, I, I want to emphasize over and over again that, uh, the comments are very critical, we encourage comments from the public and, uh, in person, and, uh, the committee meetings, uh, I, I think, uh, we want to actually advertise those meetings to the public, and we welcome them coming in, and working meetings, encourage them to talk there, and, uh, and participate, uh, like anybody else.
Okay. Last thing, and then I'll step away from the podium here.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I heard correctly, that unless staff brought discussion of actual citizens representing the five districts on the subcommittee, to your attention for discussion, it's not really a discussion, is, did I hear something to that effect?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have, uh, no additional speakers, item number eight. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hunt, I'm not sure, I just want to be a little more positive in exactly the purpose behind this effort. It's great that we're starting ahead of the game, oftentimes, it, it's trying to get the horse after it's out of the barn, but it, I applaud you for looking at it in advance. The, the primary goal, as I read it and understand it, is where are we going to go between now and 2035 as a county? Is it, is it an overview of statistical where we have been, or is it a where we plan to go and address the major topics, you know, utilities, education, uh, where, how would you summarize the intent of the document?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Buck, uh, we, we go by the statute, and the statute requires that the board of supervisors re-adopt the general plan, uh, every 10 years. And, uh, so we exceeding that, and we put it in our own general plan that we try to do a review every five years to update it. And, uh, like I pointed out, uh, a very good point, that the economy changed, the economy changed every five years so much, it's, it's very proper to, to revise the goals and the, the statistics, and, um, if, if somebody coming in from the outside or, or an investor inside, a developer, uh, understand what Mojave County is all about. And the general plan, uh, it's very important to understand, it's not a regulation, it's not an ordinance that, uh, that, uh, you know, will govern the county, but it's a guideline. It's a, it's a guideline that, uh, the commission and the board can use when they make their ordinances. And, uh, and it, it's intended to look into the future, it's intended to be a long term, so that's why we put out, uh, 2035. We always look forward and, uh, and see where the county is going, so to guide future development and the future of the county, and, and keeping the best interest of the citizens in mind. So that's the intent, even though we review it every five years, but always look into the future and provide guidance, uh, for, uh, future ordinances and regulations.
So five years ago, they created, they made major changes to the plan, every 10 years that happened?
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Buck, since I was involved, let me explain to you, like, for example, in 2005, uh, the general plan was, uh, introducing about the economy that is, uh, you know, boom, and everything is going up and up and up, and it is anticipated to go for a long time.
Sure.
In 2010, we were in a recession, so that corrected that statement in the general plan that, no, we are in a recession, and right now, you know, things, uh, the, the information about the economy and where we are at on, at that part, particular point. Now, in 2015, again, we are getting out of the recession, so that information is going to be there, the population that was changed from, uh, you know, three, caused the three supervisors to five supervisors, USGS, uh, done a $2.5 million investigation on the, on the water, that wasn't available at 2010, so that is going to be in for, uh, be in, input into the, uh, you know, the general plan. It's an overview of where we are at in Mojave County, so it is not, um, it is not, um, depends on how you define major, but you know, it is, in a way, important data that needs to be incorporated into the general plan based on those facts.
So, I understand the statistical relevance, I'm not sure of the futuristic importance. Statistics are statistics, and we can fill the house and tell them a bunch of numbers of where we are, but I'm looking for that aspect of the futuristic perspective of this plan. How important is it that we talk about 2016, 17, 18, 19, and 20?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if, and, and Commissioner Buck, if I just may use an example that Commissioners Army brought up, uh, one of the critical, uh, element of the general plan is the water resources, if I may use that as an example, and it's, it's a very critical issue, and, uh, and, uh, most of us are very concerned about it, and, uh, so that, that requires us to look into the future. And as Mr. O'Shawne pointed out, five years ago, uh, we quite honestly didn't know how much water was in these aquifers, and, uh, USGS and ADWR commissioned a study and spent two and a half million dollars, and to my knowledge, the county contributed $300,000 to that study, and, uh, now that study is complete. Now, they provided a water budget, we know how much water is in each aquifer, we know the withdrawal rate, we know the impact, what it's going to do in the next 10, 15, uh, 100, 200 years. And, uh, that has a major influence on future development in certain areas, and I, I'm talking about a groundwater study only for the three major aquifers in the county. But, uh, that, that could be included in the general plan, it should be right now, and refer to, and, uh, make sure developers and everybody, and the board and the commission are aware of it, and, uh, aware of the limitations of this precious resource, and take it into account in the future. So, we would like to reference those studies and put all the information in there that's available for everybody. That's just one example to look into the future with the general plan, what, what it can provide, it can bring attention to those studies. Of course, those studies are available right now, and they are on, on the department webpage, anybody can get it, but, uh, for a developer or, or an investor, uh, typically, they want to look at the county general plan, and typically, the commission and the board will refer to it, so it, it would be appropriate to, uh, to include it there.
Really, there's a, there can be a pat answer to this question, I'd like to avoid the pat answer and come up with just a gut response. If I say that we're not looking necessarily for dissemination of information, we're looking for ideas, we want input from the public, we want to know where the residents of this county want the county to be in 2020, is that a good statement, is that a valid statement?
I, I, I believe it's a very valid statement, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
I'm okay. At this point, we're saying the plan's great.
Yeah.
15 is going to be a busy year.
Yeah, 15 is going to be a very busy year.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to let you know that, uh, you know, when we had the last zoning ordinance meeting, uh, Mr. Jones, Commissioner Jones, uh, showed interest to be part of the committee. Commissioner Selberg, uh, is, uh, busy, and he doesn't want to do that because we're not here, just want to make sure that the, uh, rest of the commission know about it.
Do we want to kind of figure out what the four commissioners are, or are you going to do that later? I mean...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think that, uh, would be appropriate if the, if the commission chooses to do so.
Today?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On that line, if there's a four-member commission and I want to come sit in the audience...
Can't.
I can't.
No, I tried.
And the only difference is that, that, as I understand it in my world, it might be different in the governmental's perspective, as long as there's a notice that there's going to be a quorum of people in the room.
Yeah, yeah.
Isn't that satisfy the...
That's right, that satisfies that.
So let's put out notices that there, we're going to have five in the audience and not be held up by something like that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's a great idea that, uh, Commissioner Buck brought up, and I, I want to confirm it with the, uh, Chief Deputy County Attorney. I think your understanding is correct, and, uh, we can have five members, uh, there, and that would be even better, or more members, but it has to be noticed, and I want to ask Bob Taylor to comment on it.
Uh, that's correct, if, uh, if there's going to be a quorum of the commission present, it would be a meeting of the, of the, uh, of the commission, and it would have to be noticed, and there would be no problem with a quorum attending if it were so noticed.
Wonderful. Okay. So, all right.
So, having, having said that, we'd be, we'd be glad to have a five-member committee or six or seven-member committee if the commission chooses to do so, and, uh, what we will need to know then, that, uh, we will have to notice it and advertise the meeting appropriately in accordance with the open meeting laws.
You're talking thousands of dollars to do that, or are we talking a hundred bucks?
No, we'd be glad to do that, that...
I mean, for the notices, it's not that big a deal, right?
No, we, we do it anyway, actually, we advertise it anyway, so, but it's just changing the words.
All right.
Okay, so, uh, from District One, who's going to, uh, participate? We're District Four.
We're District One.
List is eight-five.
I'll do it, Mark.
You'll do it?
District Two.
I mean, Mr. Jones voiced interest, that's fine, and if he doesn't or can't show, I'd be more than happy to show.
Okay, I'll put...
He showed interest.
Okay, I'll put Jones down for right now.
Good.
Okay, District Three.
Who's District Three?
Michael or Carl?
No, I'm in...
You're three.
You're three.
Mike, three?
Check your agenda, I had to look too.
Michael, Michael Gordon.
Okay, I'll, I'll put my name down there, Michael may want to do it, but I'll do it just in case. Uh, District Four.
Crystal or Jack?
Jack.
Jack?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, on this. Okay, I know we are pointing a designated one, but let's say, Mr. Posenellstein's how he's going to be the main caper for our district, he can't show up, he emails me and says, you know, I'm not going to be at the meeting, you're District Four, Crystal, can you work with me, can you go? Can I go substitute on that for him, being that same district?
Absolutely, and if we, if we advertise it, you can come anyway.
Well, that's what I'm saying, though, I mean, you know, that way, I'm, you know, but I just want to make sure, I mean, I can go the audience, I understand, but that isn't the same as making sure I have Jack's notes straight for he can read them.
Okay.
And I'll back up Bob, so that...
Yeah.
That has that covered too.
All right, District Five.
Paul is not there, and Paul and I are the only two, so I'll be the one.
Very good.
And I have my notes from last time.
All right, so we got that. All right, let's, uh, let's get back to, uh, I'll entertain a motion on item number eight.
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendations, the way it's written, and to have the assigned districts, what we just did.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Gaberson.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, kind of modify the recommendation that each district will send one commissioner, so it's going to be a five-member committee now.
Okay.
Right, right.
Why don't you redo yours?
I make a motion on item agenda number eight, to follow staff recommendations with the exception of, it will be a five-district commissioner subcommittee, which will be, uh, notified.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Gaberson, a second by Mr. Buck, those are favored, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, same sign. Okay.
Thank you, Chair Flache. Item number nine actually is the public participation. It is, uh, is attachment A in the agenda packet, and this item is evaluation of the proposed public participation plan for the 2015 general plan review, and it is pursuant to section 4020, 42 of the Mojave County zoning ordinance, and as per Arizona State statutes, 11 dash 805. And through the 2015 general plan review, public meetings, community participation is essential for a successful effort and will always be encouraged and gladly received. The attached citizen proposed participation plan describes the proposal for accomplishing a successful public participation. Staff recommends approval of the proposed public participation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you got anything else you'd like to add, Mark?
Unless you want to break before the board about the subcommittee, I, I don't have anything else to say.
Uh, okay, item number nine, any further discussion, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just, since there's a question, I just want to point out to the general public that may not have read this, that, um, you know, A6 is very clear, that says citizen participation is always desired and encouraged. The role will be to provide public input throughout the review process. All general plan review information will be located on the county's website, including meeting dates, agendas, minutes, and all comments received. Citizens are welcome to click the comment button as well to enter any comments they desire. So I just want to make that very clear, that that's built into this participation plan to try to basically have as much, uh, public participation as possible during those subcommittee meetings and throughout the entire process. And then, the one question I do have for staff is, with the zoning ordinance review subcommittee, we did have an email distribution list, and we, we were distributing that to any member of the general public that requested it as well, correct? the general public that requested it as well, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Poznell, yes, that would be the process I recommend that anybody in the public wants to get on the email list, we'll be glad to send them all the agendas, minutes, and they're welcome to come to the meeting and also send them the advertisement on the email list.
Okay, so would there be a problem if I make the motion to approve this participation plan and amend, I guess, item C to include email distribution list as well in there and maybe six A, A6, to say that, make it clear that the citizens can request they be included on that email distribution list? I think that'll help.
Absolutely. It's very good comments, Commissioner Poznell.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess you made a motion, right?
So why don't you make the motion?
So then I'm going to, okay. I'll move that we approve item nine for the public participation plan for the 2015 general plan review, per staff recommendation, and include under either item A, I'd like to see it on both A6 and C5, and maybe add C5 or add it to one of the other C items, that an email distribution list will be available to members of the general public and that they can request to be included on that.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Poznell, second by Commissioner Buck. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, before the vote, can I have a little more discussion?
We certainly can.
Thank you.
All right. Hold that thought.
Yeah, please. And I meant it to second and for discussion purposes, if I didn't make that clear, and parliamentary procedure needs that to be said. Having participated in budgetary hearings and having participated in plans like this, I've often, I've been on both sides. I've been on the commission standpoint, I've been a member of the community. And from the commission's standpoint, looking out and seeing empty chairs is appalling. And from a participation effort, being in the audience and looking around and seeing no one else is appalling. And it's even more appalling when somebody objects to what goes on, and the response is, "Well, we had public hearings, why didn't you attend?" And along that note, and I talked to Hildy about this yesterday, that I'd like to propose that we take a little more proactive approach to soliciting the participation of the community in this process. You mentioned it is foresightful and that you want to know what the constituents and the members of the community want to hear. And I want to make that more than a pat answer. I want to see that we do something affirmatively towards encouraging participation and not just having the idea. My recommendation is that in the areas that we're going to hold these meetings, one approach that I'm suggesting is that we start with the school districts of junior and high school and know that they have student councils, that at each one of the schools and each one of these areas, they have leaders of the groups. In the seventh and eighth grade, they have the middle school president, vice president, secretary treasurer. In the high schools, they have the same classifications. And at the community college system, I believe they have the same. I would like to reach out in each area to those people and specifically invite them to attend the meeting, the hearings. And then taking it to next step, to the Kiwanis, Rotarians, the clubs and organizations that all come to mind quickly, without listing them, to reach out to their administrative ends and invite those people to come to the meeting. And then beyond that, go to the senior centers. We have the senior centers throughout the county, that we have people there that are vocal that participate, and invite those people to come to the meeting. Then, I believe, if we do that and we afford the opportunity to state the statistical evaluation that we're trying to share and to share the vision of where those people that are making the presentation feel that they want to go, but then honestly sit down and listen to what the people have to say and go one step beyond that and recommend that if you have a question that you come up with after attending this meeting, come to the next meeting and then give that opportunity. I think by doing that, it goes more than just merely offering the public an opportunity. Now you're giving them an invitation. If they refuse the invitation...
So be it.
So be it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it's a wonderful idea, and I think most of the schools, they have a speech and debate, you know, club that is actually, you know, focused on this governmental efforts and all that. I think this is a wonderful idea, and we should incorporate all those schools and especially those speech and debate, you know, clubs to participate.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Commissioner Buck for these good ideas, and we certainly can do that if that's what the commissioner wants, and I think it's a great idea, we welcome it. And of course, this will be done in addition to the newspaper advertising, to the radio and TV advertising, and the other items that are already in the draft. But we'd be glad to add those items that Commissioner Buck...
So back to the motion and the...
Yeah, I was just going to say...
And I amend.
Can we revisit the motion and...
Here we go, Jack.
Yeah, I don't want to try to nail Jack down to every single word. I think we could probably take that off.
Okay, so as stated with the addition of, so I'd like to amend my motion to, as stated with the addition of additional proactive outreach to the general public as a whole through schools, community civic organizations, chamber commerce, et cetera, those types of individuals, to get the word out as much as possible, to make them as aware as possible of what's going on, when it's going on, and give them time...
Invitation. Inviting them to come, not just making them aware, inviting them.
Right. And that's what I mean by that.
Okay, good.
Yeah, to make it an open invitation, so...
That's good. I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll entertain a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
I was going to ask, you know, that Commissioner Buck buys ice cream for those...
I would do it. If that's what it takes, I'll buy it.
I might even show up for that.
He's not going to let me forget I still owe for the...
All right, item number 10. I think that's Chris or Nick or somebody.
Excuse us, we're having some...
No worries, no worries.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Flushe, this is just a hearing discussion, possible action for the Board of Supervisors as their interest to a joint workshop with the Board of Supervisors for the general plan review.
They're more than welcome to attend.
Mr. Chairman, if I may give an update on that, you, Mr. Chairman, already wrote a letter to the chairman of the Board of Supervisors requesting whether they want to have a joint meeting, and we haven't heard back. And I'd be glad to follow up and call the chairman and ask if she had an opportunity to consider it. And maybe I would like to ask the commissioners here to talk with their district supervisors and ask them if they would consider a joint meeting and if they do indicate it, back to the chairman of the Board of Supervisors, and we'll be glad to schedule it. The time's kind of running out. If we want to have a meeting, a joint meeting, it would be good to have it before the end of the year, so we can, the board can have that input and also finalize the procedure so we can start January 1st with the process and don't lose any time and make sure we use all the available time to make the general plan better in 2015.
I don't believe it. They ignored you?
Yeah, no. That's all right. That's cool. Okay, so item number 10, we don't have to do anything about. Correct?
Correct.
Any other comments?
Any other comments, questions? Call the public on any item that's not on today's agenda. Okay, we're going to close the public comment period. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
A motion by Mr. Walker and a second by Mr. Poznell to adjourn.
Adjourn?
Adjourn. I'm looking for the ice cream. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.[1441.21]